So I'd like to call this February 27th, 2023 meeting of the Concord Select Board to order. And we'll start as usual with the consent agenda. Could I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Oh, and also I should just note that Mary Hartman, a member, will not be able to join us tonight. So we are four, but we are a quorum. Yep.
Okay. And could I just note on the January 30th, 2023 minutes on page six, it lists the consent agenda and shows the TIF was on that, and I believe we pulled it off.
No, I think we did the vote, but it wasn't sufficient. We did, we did a vote, but it wasn't a sufficient vote. We, and so council is now told us, well, actually it wasn't council, it was.
The state.
The state told us we need to go through a more elaborate procedure.
Okay, good. Thank you.
On the TIF thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to the TIF.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Of the vote.
Oh yeah. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Now to the town manager's report.
Thank you and, and good evening. We are preparing for a storm response beginning later this evening. We do expect a significant storm starting at about 11 o'clock this evening. We will have our, our winter operations crew coming in at 11:00 PM. We will have our snow desk covered beginning at 11:00 PM. Any resident who's interested or has any concerns about non-public safety response, they can reach our winter operations crew at 978-318-3220. That, that's something that we have operated for years. We've actually had the same person, Tish Hopkins, who has been answering that phone I heard earlier today for 25 years. But we're not sure that we've ever advertised that, but that is available 24 hours a day during our snow response. We do expect the, the storm to cause significant issues with the morning commute, but hopefully that will taper off. And in the interest of time, the only other update I wanted to provide this evening is on the DHCD family shelter. As I let you know, over the weekend, last Friday, February 24th, we were able to have our second meeting with DHCD staff. We had several town staff members attend that as well as Dr. Hunter. And both Senator Barrett and Representative Cataldo were also in attendance at that meeting. So what the, the new information that we learned as a result of that meeting is that there are nine parties who have been living long-term at the Best Western. And I mentioned parties because some are individuals, some are family or, or non-related parties living at the shelter. As I mentioned before, this, this was news to us. We did not know that anybody was living there long-term and, and we definitely have resources available to people and, and we do hope that they reach out to our community services coordinator. But six of the nine parties will be staying at the Best Western. Three have been offered alternative accommodations and they, they were all offered alternative accommodations. Three of them have availed themselves of that. Six will be staying. The opening date for the shelter has been moved from March 1st to March 13th. This may get pushed out again, but probably not for any significant amount of time. DHCD will still rent all remaining 99 rooms. Eventually up to 90 rooms of the, would be used for sheltering families or individuals on an emergency basis. And the other nine will be used for offices. At this point in time, DHCD intends to use the facility as an intake center, replacing the center that they have set up at Devon's. And as part of an intake facility, they will be offering emergency housing to people for three to five days and case management services before they're transferred into longer-term housing options. DHCD is interested in using this facility for longer-term housing as well, but we are still working with them on a code, a building code review. That out, that item is still outstanding with us. And the issue there is that our building commissioner needs to be sure that the facility meets the code requirements that would be required for housing that is in excess of, of 31 days. At this point in time, MOC making opportunities count is still identified as the onsite case manager, although as of Friday, I don't believe that they had finalized their contract with DHCD. Our community services coordinator, Bonnie Wilber, has been in touch with MOC and she stands ready, willing and able to coordinate any volunteer or donation opportunities. We, we've been hearing from a lot of people that they're interested in helping, but there's, we don't have anything to, any advice to be able to provide people at this point in time because they're still trying to, to work that through. So I will stop there and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the town manager. Yes, Carrie.
When you say intake center, I guess that means someone greets the people, offers emergency shelter. Is that the crux of it or is, or what else?
So yes, they, they would be connected with a case manager who would understand what the need is of, of the individual or family presenting and then set them up with services. So three to five days would be, is what DHCD considers emergency housing and that would be provided onsite at the Best Western. And then anything after that, at this point in time, people would be moving on to another housing situation. One thing I did not mention is there's certainly a concern about school-aged children and, and what they do. DESI, the Department of Education, was in attendance at that, at that meeting as well. And what they said is that they do not encourage placement of, when, when somebody is in that situation, emergency housing for three to five days, they're, they're really setting aside educational needs just for that period of time. So for, for people who are there for emergency shelter, they will not, not be likely to be entering the public school system for that short of a time.
Other questions for the town manager? Okay, for my chair's remarks, I just want to call your attention to one thing, which is the upcoming Warner's Pond Public Meeting. So I'm right now sharing on the Zoom, the flyer that went out. It also has a 2D barcode that you can scan to take a survey about the future of White Pond, as you may be aware, of Warner's Pond, excuse me, the other pond. The other, one of three W Ponds in Concord. So Warner's Pond, there was a previous plan for dredging and funds that were allocated to that purpose, but the bid that came back was several times the amount that had been allocated. And so now there are alternatives being proposed and the survey walks through the alternatives and tries to get your feedback on them. And there will also be this public meeting on Thursday. It is going to be here in the hearing room, but there also are Zoom access instructions on the flyer. So if you look at the town meeting calendar, you'll see that and you can join. Just share all this because previously not all the information was available. Okay, with that, we will move to the termination of the TIF agreement. So again, to provide a little context on this, or maybe the town manager would like to, we had a previous agreement that provided a preferential treatment for the property that's often called the Junction Village site off of Winthrop Street. And there was an agreement with the Junction Village Limited Partnership to provide preferential tax treatment. I have recused myself from deliberations regarding the site, but I don't know, terminating this agreement doesn't seem like a, kind of a conflict to me. Because the developers included their pursuit of the agreement.
Do you have the memorandum in the packet? It is, okay.
Yeah. So that explains why it is that we now need three different motions to conclude this arrangement. So could I have a motion unless there's further discussion or deliberation?
Move to terminate the tax increment financing TIF agreement dated as December 2020. The TIF agreement between the Town of Concord and Junction Village ALF Limited Partnership, the developer relating to the Christopher Heights Assisted Living Facility, proposed to be constructed on land identified as Assessor's Parcel Number 8D-2013-1, the project.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to petition the EACC, I'm not sure what that is, Executive Office or whatever. Look that up. One second. Skip that one while Carrie looks it up. We'll do the last one. Move to authorize the town manager or her designee to do all things necessary to effectuate these actions.
Seems a little out of sequence.
Yeah, it does. All right, we'll wait. Thanks. Move to petition the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council to decertify the TIF agreement as the developer has provided notice that it has no intention of meeting its expected completion timeframes in Section B 3, i.e. expected completion by July 1st, 2022, or no later than July 1st, 2023, in the event of construction delays. And move to authorize the town manager or a designee to do all things necessary to effectuate these actions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll move to our next item, which is a public hearing for the application of a transfer of license and change of manager for Artichoke Incorporated.
Okay, move to open the public hearing.
Which is doing business as Vintage's Adventures in Wine to Ms. Megan K. Elwell. So could the applicant step forward?
Okay, move to open the public hearing.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, have a seat. Is the light green on your microphone there?
Ah, yes.
Okay, excellent. Ms. Elwell. So can you describe a little bit about your application? I, I think we have the materials.
Okay.
But.
Um, so Vintage's has been in business as it is for 23 years now. And the current owners are looking to move on to other projects. It's quite some time and they're handing the business off to me. So we're just in the process of doing what needs to be done in terms of transferring the license and continuing the business as is.
Okay. Now, I did have a couple of questions. I mean, one was about the inventory. It appears that there is some inventory that remains from the former owners and will continue to be on site.
Yes.
But then you, and, and it doesn't sound like there's a transfer of inventory or that you're purchasing inventory from them? Or is that part of just the $1 arrangement?
Yes, yes. It's all included. It's a very, very, very generous.
I was gonna say that.
Yeah, it's very much a family kind of atmosphere in this entire transaction. If I could find a word to describe it, it would be kind of a family transition.
I see. Okay. Yeah, because some of that inventory is quite valuable.
Delicious.
So, and do you intend to continue operating the store in a similar vein?
Absolutely. I've been a wine professional for about a decade now. I've been with Vintage's for cussing on four years. It's a very unique and special store, particularly as far as wine goes, which is how I ended up there. I'm not.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
You were seeking this destination and you arrived there.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, for sure. But to summarize, yes, it will be continued very much as is. There won't be any lottery or, you know, kind of lower-end things of that nature moving forward. I can plan to keep it much the same.
Yeah, I don't know if you all are familiar with Vintage's, but it's a highly specialized wine store, I would say. So, okay. Any questions regarding the other aspects of the application? And anything? Okay. Then we'll have a motion.
Um, you have to take comment from.
Oh, excuse me. That's right. So we will now open to comment from the public. Are there any comments from the public on this application of transfer of license? Okay, seeing none, seeing none on Zoom. If you, if you're on Zoom, you can indicate you want to make a comment by using your raise hand function. Okay, now we can take the motion.
Should we have a wine tasting?
That might be considered, you know, maybe might compromise our judgment.
Need some.
All right.
Okay, move to close the public hearing.
All right.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Move to approve the application of a transfer of license and change of manager for Artichoke Incorporated DBA Vintage's Adventures in Wine to Ms. Megan K. Elwell.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great luck with it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we are actually a little ahead of schedule for the business that we were going to do before the, the annual town meeting public hearing. So, and of course, we're not going to be taking up reviewing the town meeting warrant articles item. We could do nominations and appointments.
Okay, nominations to the Civil War Monument Task Force, Catherine McGrath at 134 Belknap Street to complete an unexpired term to conclude the completion of the project. And Climate Action Committee, Karen Gibson of 1641 Main Street for a term to expire May 30th, 2024. Jerry Frankel of 132 Jenny Dugan Road for a term to expire April 30th, 2025. Janet Miller of 1647 Main Street for a term to expire April 30th, 2025. Michael McDonald of 208 Wright Road for a term to expire May 30th, 2024. Cheryl Baggan of 3 Bolton Road for a term to expire April 30th, 2025. Ben Slaton of 135 Hillside Avenue for a term to expire April 30th, 2025. Gavin Culver of 88 Old Marlboro Road for a term to expire April 30th, 2025. Jake Swenson of 140 Nut Meadow Crossing for a term to expire May 30th, 2024. Paul Kirshen of 38 Longfellow Road for a term to expire May 31st, 2024. John Bolduc of 58 Stone Road, Unit 9, for a term to expire April 30th, 2023. Ryan Crowns of 49 Indian Pipeline for a term to expire May 31st, 2024. Brad Hubbard Nelson of 225 Nashaudic Road for a term to expire April 30th, 2025. And Courtney Eaton of 141 Monson Road for a term to expire May 31st, 2024. And Planning Board, Robert Almeida of 28 Comerford Road to complete an unexpired term to conclude on May 31st, 2024.
Thanks for that. And also I would just note that following the charge that we have for the Climate Action Committee, the initial membership is 13, which means that a quorum will be seven members. Also, there is one member whose term will expire very shortly, but we're just getting them on board to get us a good start.
So is that 13 people?
It's 13 people.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can that's how many we're going to have permanently?
No, the, as the charge states, as members roll off, it will decline until it gets to nine members.
Okay.
Okay. Now we're ready for appointments.
Move to appoint Kate Chartener of 888 Sudbury Road as a full member representative to the Historic Districts Commission for the Concord Museum for a term to expire January 1st, 2027, to the Historic Districts Commission. Okay. Move to appoint Kathleen Reedy of 125 Paul Revere Road for a second term to expire May 31st, 2026, to the Library Committee. Move to appoint Rick Miller of 300 Main Street for a retroactive appointment for a second term from June 1st, 2021 to May 31st, 2024. Gavin Morrissey of 38 Aurora Lane for a retroactive appointment for a second term from June 1st, 2022 to May 31st, 2025. Jennifer Yobaldino of 38 Crabtree Road for a second term to expire May 31st, 2026 to the Trustees of Town Donations.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Oh, we do, we have West Concord Advisory Committee.
Move to appoint Susan, I apologize if I don't pronounce this right, Malo Deszniak of 392 Border Road for a retroactive appointment for a second term from June 1st, 2022 to May 31st, 2025, to the West Concord Advisory Commission.
Okay, now.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And can I just confirm that you did read Robert Almeida's name?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So one question, Carrie, I think I heard that you were not going to be in a position to present the legal budget item tonight?
That's correct.
Yeah, so maybe we could take your statement on that and see when we will get back to it.
Sure. As soon as the next meeting, it's, it's partially prepared. I just haven't completed. So as soon as you can schedule it, as long as it's not March 20th.
As long as it's not March 20th.
March 20th.
Numbers.
Okay, so we will not be taking up that item tonight. And so then that brings us to correspondence, which in our packet, I would just acknowledge that we received a large amount of correspondence this week. And it's included in our packet. There were some letters I would also note that we received today, obviously too late to include in the packet. But there were 11 letters that were included. There were about eight of them that were related to the Emergency Family Shelter and a couple for the Hanscom Field Development, one about the Patriots' Day Parade. So that's the correspondence for this week. And I do believe we have a few minutes that we could take public comment now before the public hearing. We'd need to conclude at 6:56 or 6:57 to be able to start the public hearing on time. So please, if you have a public comment, come and state your name and address and make your comment.
Ellen Quackenbush, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Ellen Quackenbush, 206 Prairie Street for Concord for Ukraine. And you'll note the correspondence that was in your package. The Public Ceremony and Celebration Committee met this morning at 8:00 AM to review the criteria for inclusion in community, committee-sponsored events. I wanted to make three points. One, there was significant interest from the public. Seven people attended, despite the early time, with each speaking during the public comment period. The public is clearly invested in how town events are managed. The committee only focused on Patriots, the Patriots' Day Parade, perhaps in response to several groups requesting to march and being denied. The committee handed out a 15-point list of criteria for participation, allowing color guards, marching bands, reenactors, public officials, and specifically excluding, quote, "units that are to any degree political or commercial." The public noted that the exclusion of political entities would exclude groups such as the League of Women Voters and some groups, perhaps such as Concord CAN, that marched last year. Finally, during their discussion, the committee modified the participation in the Patriots' Day Parade to be the sole discretion of the committee, specifically mentioning, and I'm sorry, you can see this in the notes, their concern that the select board might get involved. I think that this violates the committee's charge revised December 2022 that states that the committee has complete charge with the approval of the select board of public ceremonies. We don't believe that any committee should have the last word on a public event as important as the celebration of our nation's birth. Patriots' Day is a time for patriots. And the US has been actively involved for over one year in the brave Ukrainian patriots' fight for their freedom. We respectfully request, and this was in my, our letter as well, that the select board review the committee's criteria for the Patriots' Day Parade and ask if they revisit their denial for Concord for Ukraine's participation. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Other comments from the public?
My name is Victoria Weissovich and Emerald Drive, and I'm here today to express my concerns about the homeless family shelter. Specifically, I'm concerned that the town has placed an undue reliance on the expertise and resources of the MOC organization without thoroughly examining their capacity to deliver the necessary services and support to the families in need. It's obvious that homelessness is a complex issue and families who find themselves without a home require a broad range of services and supports in order to stabilize their situation and transition to more permanent housing. While I have no doubt that the MOC organization is well-intentioned and dedicated to serving the needs of homeless families, I'm concerned that they may not have the resources to meet the full range of the needs of homeless families. One of the question, and the reason why I have those concerns is that a couple of questions were raised two weeks ago and they have not been addressed by either the town officials or DHCD. I read the report. And specifically, one of the questions that I have is how much staff are they dedicating to providing the security onsite? Based on our state representative report, which mentions that about 50 families that will be moved to the facility, I extrapolated the numbers. And that's brings us to about 175 people to start with. I would like to know how much staff are they allocating to the security onsite? And I have not heard the answer to that question. I did see that MOC will provide transportation. Again, no details were given of what exactly that means. Are there going to be shuttles running and bringing those families to the library, to Emerson Playgrounds? These are families with small children. I have two small kids. Even though they are staying there for three to five days, that's still long enough to be stuck in a small room with small children and not having the access to the playground. Were these questions raised? Were they addressed? I don't think we should be simply relying on the states, on the statements that everything is taken care by the MOC. The families who rely on the shelter are among the most vulnerable, vulnerable members of our community. And it's our job to make sure that they receive the care and support in case there are any organizational challenges or disruptions that may arise.
We, we will need to conclude your comments.
So I urge the board to develop a contingency plan to ensure that the families who rely on this shelter are not left without adequate care and support in case of any organizational disruptions. And so far, I have not, what can, I would like to get reassured that this facility can be run safely and efficiently. And usually that's done by providing details and numbers. So I urge you to include homeless family shelter on your agenda for next time and be more aggressive in obtaining those details and providing them to the public. Thanks.
Thanks for your comment. So we will now adjourn to the hearing room to begin the town meeting.
Clarify something for really quick. Clarify something for really quick.
We could do it in the hallway. I mean, does it need to be?
Yes, it does.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to check with the town manager because I thought I heard the previous speaker state that the town had selected MOC. And I just want to ask the town manager. It's the town, who selects MOC?
I did not say that.
Oh, good. Okay, good. Okay, sorry.
All right. Let's adjourn to the hearing room for the public.
Signs with us.
We will continue in session as the Select Board here, our next item on our agenda, which I will narrow the scope of, is to deliberate on positions on a few articles. But those articles I would suggest are, will be limited to Article four, Article, I don't know, twenty two? No, Article four, Article thirty, Article thirty two, how about that? And because in part, because Mary Hartman is not here this evening, and I think should have an opportunity to weigh in on any articles that have any controversy, but I did note, note that Articles four, thirty and thirty two did not have any debate to speak of or concerns raised.
All right, are you looking for a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I move that the Select Board support.
All right, have heard, recommend for affirmative.
Recommend affirmative action on Articles four.
I think we usually do them one at a time.
Thirty, all right, Article four. I vote that I move that the Select Board recommend affirmative action on Articles four.
Okay, do I have a second?
We second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Okay.
Now, I only heard two of us.
Whoops.
Are you not voting in favor? On Article four?
It's okay if you want to wait a week or two or three, you're not ready to vote.
Yeah, I'm not. I know, I'm not ready to vote on it because the, there were categories that were yet to be defined. Positions yet to be defined.
Right, there were two that, okay.
All right.
All right. All right, I move that the Select Board recommend affirmative action on Article thirty.
And are you also concerned about that because the NRC has not ruled? Perhaps we'll not get very far tonight.
Maybe we should wait for Mary anyway.
Okay, well, I just, I was hoping to just knock off a few of the easier ones tonight, but maybe that's backfiring. So, how about the demolition review by law, though? Article thirty two, I think we might be able to come to agreement on that one. Changing from forty five days to sixty days.
All right.
Okay.
All right. Recommend the Select Board, I, I move that the Select Board recommend affirmative action on Article thirty two.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. So now that takes us back to public comments. So we, we head to truncate our public comment. So if there is a public comment, I would open the floor to that possibility. I don't see any. So then we had liaison reports.
Excuse me, I, I don't have a public comment, but I have a question. Could you repeat the time to which you continued?
Seven P M.
Seven.
On March twenty seventh, all right.
Yeah. Okay, so so now I, I think we're going to skip liaison report tonight.
Sounds like a good idea.
And I think it's time to adjourn.
Right.
Okay.
You don't want.
Turning at ten P M exactly.